No. So we're just passing the. This one's really nice. It's got like a, uh, it's got that fine coin on it, but it has like a gel sort of.
The commie signed in to talk, but I don't see him. Is he hiding somewhere?
Oh, last meeting of the year. Ten down, forty to go. Ah, look at you. So I want to get this gun and turn it in before.
Yeah, here, we're all here.
He must be on a different cycle because I feel like we just did this.
Oh, yeah. Twelfth of February last year. I did my other one. I mean, this?
Yeah.
No, it's fine. Twenty-five would be the second year for our term that you have to get now filed. And then the primary in May to get on the fall down. It seems crazy.
It seems crazy early, but I guess.
Wait until I have to. I hate knocking on people's doors. I feel like a vacuum cleaner salesman or something going and knocking on people's doors for the signature.
Some people.
Oh, there's some people I do not like you knocking on their door.
Call a meeting in order if everyone completes their pledge of allegiance and then a moment of reflection, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kirk, we have roll call, please.
Councilman Eads?
Here.
Councilman Hayes?
Here.
Councilman Hitt?
Here.
Councilman McDaniel?
Here.
Councilman Norman?
Here.
Councilman Stahl?
Present.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
President Peters?
Here.
Okay, did everybody get a chance to take a look at the minutes from December fifth? Any questions or concerns? Uh, here and then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? We do have, we do have a public hearing tonight, so could I get a motion to exit regular meeting?
Make a motion.
Second.
Do roll call on that, right? Yeah, roll call.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is on resolution one ninety-six dash twenty-four. If they want to speak on behalf of this, or?
Yeah, I'll turn it over to the floor.
Uh, Wes Smith, owner's representative, uh, brought the owners, um, appreciating from the council this evening. We've got to talk about this one on the first reading, so if you have any questions.
I do have a question. I'm surprised, surprised, right?
Is your, your microphone on, Wes? Is that microphone on?
Is it, is it on?
He's talking to Wes.
So, Mr. Smith, um, and I had asked Mr. Gross this previously about the London Landing. Are, are, are you, are you pretty much the previous phases? What would you say the percentage is that you're, you're sold out on those?
I mean, at this point, they're almost a hundred percent sold out on the.
Almost a hundred would be eighty, ninety, ninety-five?
Ninety-eight percent.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And we're moving into, uh, construction on London Landing Phase Three.
Okay.
And we'll immediately move into Phase Four.
Okay.
And there, um, Arbor is chomping at the bit to get into Phase Three.
All right.
So it's great news.
Okay, great, thank you.
And phase, pardon me, but Phase Four is the area that's going to bring out the additional roadways or roadways?
Yes, sir. Yeah, there, there will be a connection to fifty-six, uh, through the Bowling Alley property.
Okay.
Yes.
And there's?
Through Phase Four, and then Phase Three also has a connection to fifty-six as well. So there'll be two connections from London Landing to fifty-six.
So one where the construction road is now will become a, an actual road and then?
Yep.
Over to Bowling Alley.
Yep, yep. Phase Four has the connection through Bowling Alley. Yes, sir.
And we have ample, uh, water storage there for retention ponds and everything's been checked by the planning commission. I don't think there's been any objections at any point since that point.
Actually, that has been vetted by Choice One, our engineers that we contract to do plan review, and it has been confirmed to be appropriate. Thank you.
I'll also, you, you guys know I live out there. The, the road that is right by my house, which is the end of, uh, Brook's Edge, Phase Two, starting to London Landing. They have already got curbs on that road. They've been working, I don't know if you guys have driven back there, but they've been working on that. So that road looks like they're going to put blacktop on it, I would assume. I was going to say, any day, they, they had it all set up and they're doing a good job and working hard and starting exactly at eight AM on the nose every day, even on Saturdays.
All right, any other questions? All right, here and then, uh, can I motion to exit the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, on to, uh, communications and announcements. There are none, audience concerns? Okay. Uh, on to committee reports. Greg?
Personnel and Finance Committee met Monday, December sixteenth. Couple items run by you. Tax collections overall for general fund at this point throughout the year, they're up two point three eight percent compared to last year. Fire funds actually up two point seven four percent compared to last year. The auditors report, uh, revenue for the year, we'll just skip for the year. Revenue for the year sixteen million nine hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, rounded that. And expenses are twenty-one million nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, but remember, six million one hundred and forty-three thousand was part of the transfer to Mid-Ohio. So for the year, the revenue is higher than the expenses. We have some items coming before council either tonight or in the near future. I'll just give you a quick update if you weren't at the meeting. We had a long discussion with the three councils, the three committee members, also two other council members and the, and the representatives for the developers about how we move forward, uh, council. Tonight, we're going to, uh, bring forth within the budget to add some money for, uh, council miscellaneous so that we can have outside council or, or someone review this for, on our behalf. So that's going to happen, uh, in the, uh, budget part of this. That'll give us a little time if we put it in the budget to, uh, find someone to do the review and then get that done. We do have, um, another motion that's, or another piece that's going to come before council next month. The Civic Plus program for, um, agenda management. I discussed this in the meeting that, uh, our clerk went through. He's looked at it, I've looked at it. I know that there were some concerns about that, so I had the clerk reach out. And he, I think he reached out to three other communities and all three of those, the clerks that he, that he spoke to were in favor of this, and it seems to work well as a standalone program. So we're going to bring that forward. I did email the representative from Civic Plus to see if they would honor the price they gave me three or four, about three months ago. They said they would honor that price for twenty-five, so it'll be fifty-two hundred dollars, which includes, um, a thousand for the setup, forty-two hundred dollars is the, uh, fee for the annual fee on that. There is a discount that will be included in that. It should come down a little bit. I think there's a ten percent discount because we have more than one. There's, uh, other items that are going to come before tonight, uh, the cruiser. And for the police department, and I think that's, that's most of what I want to discuss tonight. Thank you.
At, uh, public service and public safety on the tenth. And I have the, uh, Parks and Rec, uh, youth sports program, winter basketball. Game started a couple Sundays ago. Spring volleyball registration will launch in January. The dogway stations and bike racks have been installed, or they've been delivered. I'm not sure if they've been installed yet. The Old Fashioned Christmas had vendor village set up at Cowling Park along with a few food trucks. Camera access to both Cowling and Merrimack Park are now able to be seen on the same server. New adult programs coming in early twenty-twenty-five, ballroom dancing and cornhole league. And they plan on implementing, plan for, uh, the ambassador program in the spring of twenty-twenty-five. That's all I got for Parks and Rec. Got the fire, fire report. And, uh, departmental EMS training, high-tech kids through Ohio Health. Departmental EMS training, pediatrics through Madison Health, uh, departmental fire training, drivers training. Hosted several students for ride time for tolls and grant paramedic classes. Begin their annual toy drive, picked up toys from pig show at fairgrounds. And twenty-three hundred and eighteen incidents at the time of this training. Spent a lot after that.
Rich?
Uh, twelve-ten, we had, uh, Public Safety Service Committee meeting. Uh, all three of my committee members were present. We had eight city representatives in attendance. Called meeting to order at six PM. Minutes of the November twelfth meeting were approved as written. Sergeant Harris was there for Chief Nickel. He gave the police report. Mr. Stahl will give that momentarily to you. Uh, Chief Eads gave the fire and EMS report. Uh, Mr. McDaniel just gave it to you. Mr. Castle was there. Uh, a couple things you brought up, uh, there's some legislation tonight. Uh, there's a street name change, uh, Jenkinson Drive to Jenkinson Avenue. I believe Mr. Hitt sponsoring that. Uh, we received a quote, reference the pedestrian crosswalk lights that we've been talking about at Park and Main and Fifth Street in Maine. A company representative for the crosswalk lights, um, says that Main Street being so wide that in his professional opinion, the lights would have little effect and drivers would have a very hard time seeing them. The costs were set at fifty thousand dollars. That would be for both of them. Uh, I did talk to Sergeant Harris in the meeting, uh, about the speeding problem we have in that area. Uh, we will continue efforts on this issue in that area. Under new business, Mayor Klauser talked about event logistics. Uh, he wants to redo that program. Mr. Stahl will be the safety committee member on the panel to help with this in undertaking with the mayor. Uh, under old business, there was some discussion on police dispatching, uh, no action taken. Uh, we do have some preliminary figures, uh, that the safety committee has received, uh, comparison between the city and the county. Uh, city dispatch reporter spoke to the committee in reference to concerns that she obviously has over a possible change in dispatch services. We adjourned at six-thirty. Next safety service meeting will take place on January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Can't believe I'm saying that, at six PM, be in the conference room next door. That's all I got. Thank you.
Yeah, I attended the Personal Budget and Finance Committee meeting. One of the other things we talked about was the fire chief needing a new truck. And then also, Mr. Norman brought up, uh, uh, the possibility of a grading system for sidewalks. Uh, we also talked about outside council to review, uh, the TIFs and NCA that's concerning the development areas. Uh, the next finance meeting is January twenty-first at five-thirty in the meeting room next door. So that's a change from the normal date, from the twentieth to the twenty-first. And then I also attended the Public Service Committee meeting. Uh, one of the things we talked about was, um, uh, the standardization of, or legislation to standardize criteria for various events in the community such as boundaries, hours, um, number of events per year. They also talked about the street department helping out sanitation while they're short on staff. And the possibility of getting a new, uh, trash truck next August. And then some of the other legislation that's coming forward tonight to amend, um, into the budget. Mr. Long brought up that, uh, they need a new pole barn to store equipment um, in order, in order to, um, preserve the lifetime of those vehicles and other equipment. Uh, the next public service meeting is January fourteenth at five PM in the meeting room next door. That's it.
Thank you. Shannon?
I also attended Personnel and Finance, and my two colleagues have covered everything that we discussed in that committee, so I have nothing to add.
Thank you. John?
I attended the Public Service Committee and I'm on the safety committee. I had the, uh, committee briefing for the police. They successfully hosted the eleventh annual shop with the cop event assisting eleven families in need this year. The K-9 Cruiser was completed and its uplifting is now fully operational and in service. The sergeant promotion process has been concluded. Officer Ryan Davis finished first and is expected to be promoted in January. Officer Zager Manville has completed his field training program and is now conducting solo patrols. Officers provided foot traffic for carriage rides and pedestrians at the intersection of Main and High as part of the Old Fashioned Christmas event. They hosted a door lock giveaway at City Hall in collaboration with Shaletta Brundage, also known as Minnesota's Autism Mom, to support families with autistic children. They will be obtaining six new tasers to supplement the four they obtained a year ago. These are replacing older models that have exceeded their life expectancy. It is anticipated to use funding from OVI and drug fines revenue lines, not draw on the capital general funds. Previously, each officer was issued a taser. However, they will be pooled devices shared across shifts due to the lack of life expectancy of tasers. With ten, each shift officer will have one available. They will be requesting capital funded for a new patrol cruiser in twenty-twenty-five to continue maintaining the fleet. This is estimated to be seventy thousand with complete equipment uplifted. That's all I have.
Thank you. Michael?
Uh, I attended the Public Service Committee meeting, uh, and I usually give the street report. A lot of it you've kind of already covered. We talked about the pole barn. We talked about the salt barn that needed the, the roof, uh, and our previous action at a council meeting that we took money out for that. So it was brought to our attention that we had already, uh, in resolution one fifty-eight dash two-four, we'd already authorized a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that. So we're actually saving money by budgeting it for a hundred thousand instead. So that's what we've decided we're going to try to do later on. Uh, the street closing, uh, I don't know if you saw it, it actually went out on a police bleep today. The street closing at Center Street will start on January sixth, and it'll go sixty days. They've already put up the no parking signs. Those signs do not go into effect until January sixth. But just so you know, if your car's there after that, after that time, it can and probably will be towed. So just, I think the city's doing a great job of getting that out almost, uh, well, at least a half a month in advance to, so you can get that done. Um, are we, one of our new trucks are out and on the road that we purchased. That was another thing that was shared. And we also, uh, shared that coming in next year, they would like to get that pole barn to shelter the equipment that we're buying, the trucks and the equipment that it's left out in the weather, obviously, it would you know, disintegrate quicker. So they want to put that in some type of pole barn where it's sheltered from the weather. Uh, other than that, that's it.
All right, thank you. On to city official reports. Matt?
All right, thank you. I want to start off by wishing everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Also, I'd like to thank our safety service workers, the ones that'll be working on those days. I assume it has to be pretty tough being away from your family on the holidays, but I just want them to know that we appreciate them and them doing that for us and keeping us safe. The community digital sign has been erected and is functioning. We're working through the programming aspect and getting more familiar with the product itself. We understand that it was a little bright to begin, but we've been able to dim the brightness, um, fifty percent throughout the day and ten percent at night. That actually makes the sign less bright than standard headlights now. We had another comprehensive plan steering committee meeting last week. A lot of data was presented with the majority coming from the survey in the open house. We will be looking to have other committees meet in the future as we start to actually build the plan. The handout from the meeting has been uploaded to the website, londonohio.gov. The five new pieces of legislation that we've been talking about with the TIF, the tax incremental financing and the NCA, the new community authority are on the second reading tonight. And I, I already spoke about this, and we understand this is a lot of information. And I hope anyone who asks questions will be able to reach out. You can reach out to us, uh, the law director, the auditor, the county economic developer. Just reach out at any time if you want to sit down and talk about it or if, while you're reading through it, if you have questions, please just reach out to us. The past couple weeks have been busy with meetings, but there's also been a lot of fun going around town. Santa breakfasts, Madison Health heartfelt holidays. The Madison County Board of DD had their open house, as well as their cabaret. I was able to teach junior achievement to Mrs. King's first grade class at London Elementary. And also attended Commissioner Forrest's retirement party at the courthouse this week. So with that being said, I want to thank Commissioner, the Commissioner for his dedication to the county and the partnership with not only myself, but the city. Um, I've sat on a lot of boards with him and known him for a long time. He did a great job, and I just want to thank him for all he's done for us. I will be bringing board appointments to the next city council meeting for terms expiring at the end of the year. There, there will be ten appointments with five being from the Historic Downtown Revitalization Committee. And four of the remaining five are reappointments from various boards, so people that are already sitting on the board that'll just be reappointed. It looks like that we'll be looking for three new members out of the current five members for the Historic Downtown Revitalization Committee. If anyone is interested or city council has a suggestion, please let me know. Um, we have also put it out on social media posts to see if anyone is interested in serving on HDRC. Now on to the fun fact, which is two hundred and sixty. Parks and Recreation Youth Basketball is in full swing. This year, we have two hundred and sixty participants, which is a ten percent increase from last year. It's fantastic, and I'm happy that we're able to offer this to the youth of our community. Overall, we are using thirty-four hours of gym time per week in other facilities, mainly London City Schools. These gym times run almost to almost nine PM some nights with second and third graders not getting home until late on school nights. We need to continue to keep looking toward the future and be proactive than reactive. And with our programs growing, the schools programs growing, gym time will continue to become more limited. I hope we can start having some serious discussions in twenty-twenty-five on how to move forward. And I, I do ask that this be put on the Public Service Committee agenda, so we can start looking at, at this in twenty-twenty-five. That's all I have. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You're talking about the committees and redoing them, which made me think of the Mid-Ohio Committee. Are we ever going to have any type of report from them ever or? Because, you know, when we had the VPU, we had a rep, a, a council rep that would kind of fill us in on what happened at the VPU meetings. But we don't, we don't have that currently with the Mid-Ohio. Is that something we were going to do or we don't need to do or?
I, I can let you know that, you know, we could ask them to come in, but I'll tell you that we attend every meeting, either myself or Rex are at every, they, they meet twice a month. So we'll just start giving you updates on it. We'll just write a little update, have Rex give you guys an update after every meeting, let you know kind of what's going on. I could tell you right now, we're still working on tap fees. They want to raise the tap fees quite a bit. We've been battling with them about that. We think the increase they want to do is a little too high, and we're trying to get them to stagger it out. So currently, they are bringing in someone, uh, a third party to look at it and pretty much give them guestimates of what they think the tap fee should be, um, because they're trying to raise it quite significantly. And, um, you know, that really wouldn't affect current citizens, right? But it affects development. It affects, uh, you know, people looking this way, right? So we want to make sure that we understand our tap fees were very low, and we understand that. And, you know, they did increase them, uh, two or three thousand dollars. But we think the jump they're trying to do automatically is just a little too much. That's the main thing that's kind of been going on. We're still working on the East Side Sewer. That is still being worked on. They had a bid opening. They had one bidder come in. So they're going to rebid that project and try to get some more people to buy it on it, um, to try to get a lower bid and continue on the East Side trunk sewer that we had been doing for a long time, that project. Is there anything else you could think of that you want to touch on with that? That's kind of the big things for the city of London right now. Thanks for asking, though.
Oh, thank you.
Could I ask something? How long have they been in this business, Mid-Ohio?
How long have they been in, formed? Were they?
How could they not know what their tap fees need to be? I mean?
Oh, they, no, they, they have an idea of what the tap fees should be, right? And they're trying to get to a certain point, and we understand that at some, at some time that it should be to that point. We just think it should be graduated over a few years to kind of build it up instead of just saying, okay. Take, for example, Arbor Homes. All right, you've been paying X amount of dollars. Now you got to pay two X. And it's like, hold, hold on. Like, so we're just trying to, to work it in a little bit slower.
Thanks.
Rex?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just doing a short update, we continually, continuing to work on, uh, the bond offering that we're going to do. Hopefully have that stuff finished up and we'll put the bonds out for bid in February and get that taken care of. I will give you on a side note, in the process of doing this, USDA required us to do a title search on the property of which we did, and it came back that there's a lien on our property. And it kind of set me back a little bit, but the title company goes, it's been on there since two thousand and eleven. Don't worry about it. It was a lien of work that was done for, from a contractor to the school district. And for whatever reason, they decided to put it on the city's property. I think they were given some bad information, so we're working on trying to get that removed, uh, so that it doesn't affect our credit rating.
And we're confident in that.
Yeah, so. So that's about everything, you know, I've been working on other items, but I think most of the stuff got reported tonight in the committee, so that's it.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President, I have a question for Mr. Castle.
Yep.
At the last meeting, 206 dash 24 was passed, but one of the questions I had during that meeting was that it stated there was an, would be an engineer's report. Have we had an engineer's report since that point?
Do you want to refresh my, what was 206? I'm sorry.
Uh, 206 was actually the piece that, that allowed, uh, the rest, or the public hearing, the notices to go out. But there was lots of parts, one of the part was the, the engineer was supposed to have checked off on?
That was sent to them, they have not reported back as of today. But they said they should hope to have it for the, I'm hoping by, for the end of the year. But it was submitted for them to give a opinion.
Okay, I just wanted to see if there's any movement.
Okay, on to old business, up for a fourth reading, Resolution 196 dash 24, can I get motion to read by title number?
So moved, second.
Resolution 196 24, a resolution adopting the recommendations of the Plan Commission, London Landing at Brookside Spaceport.
There's already been a lot of discussion on this. Does anybody have any questions for our project developers?
I do. Does this have any TIFs in it, like, at all? Damn, they're not part of that. Okay, thank you.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 196 dash 24 is passed, on for a third reading, ordinance 198 dash 24, can I get motion to read by title number?
So moved, second.
Ordinance 198 24, an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of London, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025.
So this is the 2025 budget. Uh, we've had, we've made a couple adjustments at the last meeting. I do want clarification on, one was, did we actually amend to take out the $100,000 for the street department?
We did, but it was.
We, we, we did amend that actually, correct? I just wanted to make sure that was taken out. Okay, because I think that's a discussion point you want to have, is that true?
But I think they were going to, wanted to put it back in because it would save us some $50,000 like Mr. Norman was talking about earlier.
Okay, so, so we're going to have to amend to put that back in?
I do believe, unless they fixed it.
Okay, that's fine, I just.
Did the auditor do that?
No, we, we amended.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Okay. And then just a little further clarification. So at the, the meeting on Monday where we discussed, uh, seeking, uh, outside counsel or professional services, uh, during that discussion, Safety Service Director Castle suggested that, uh, that we have put $100,000 in that account, which seems like a, really a lot of money. However, the reason being was that it would be there, we wouldn't have to go back and get it. And we're really not, we don't have an idea yet what it will cost, right? My hope is that it's a whole lot less than that. But that was the suggestion of the, the Safety Service Director the other day, his former council member. So, you know, I think, uh, I think we all agree that that wasn't a bad idea. Any money that's not spent is going to go back into general fund later anyway. So if there's any discussion points about these before I move to amend.
You're doing a amendment on Rex.
I just wanted to make it clear, uh, we had estimations as what we thought it was going to cost for that kind of service, the law director and I. It was substantially less than that, but I would, wouldn't want to make a lower or approximate estimation and then it come in above that and then we have to do council action again. So that's why I gave that higher number, um, so that, you know, and I think that's what Councilman Eads said was it shouldn't reach that high, but it, it's going to, it's not going to be cheap, I'll tell you that. Our estimations are about 50, $60,000. So, that's all.
So do we need to make a motion to amend?
So, so I move that we amend 198 24 to put back in the $100,000 for street.
Street maintenance, yep.
That would have been street operations, correct? What do you, what's funny, Mayor?
For the salt barn.
For the salt barn?
Yeah, I, I don't think it was listed under operations.
It's probably under maintenance of buildings would be my guess.
As far as that.
I think that's where it was.
Yeah.
I think you're right.
And she actually, since the committee had recommended that, I think she actually, in the hard copy, I think she actually put it in there, hoping that she would approve to put it back. So she would take it out if you didn't, of course.
So the document we're looking at has that back in there?
I think that's what she said.
Okay.
That's what she said.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it's back in there.
It just needs council to put it, make sure that it gets back in there because you took it out.
And we're, and we're going to put that into which fund?
I think it was the building maintenance.
Should be two, two, I think it's.
I would just make a motion to put the $100,000 back that you guys took out at the last meeting and then, and then we'll make sure that it gets put right back to where it was.
Okay.
For the salt barn.
Okay, so I moved to amend 198 24 to reinsert the $100,000 that was removed at the last council meeting for the salt barn. I also moved to add $100,000 to council under the council line.
Miscellaneous.
And it will be, I just had that, under operations, I assume, council operations?
Miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous. Well, I know I'm looking at the top part for council. So that's a, that's a sub-line of that, right? Council miscellaneous? Right, okay. So, yes, and add $100,000 to the miscellaneous line for city council.
I'll second that.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Ms. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Wait, I, the amending or?
That, that was amended.
Okay, so this is just general discussion. I do, I do have some discussion, nothing that's going to hold it back from being voted on, but I, I do have concerns a little bit. Uh, I went through and every meeting, our auditor for the finances gives us a document for, that has the agenda and it's the auditor's update and she does it for every month and it tells us, uh, what our expenses were for the previous month and what our revenue was for the previous month. Our average revenue for the year so far, and this is up to the last meeting, our average revenue per month is about 1.3 million and our average expense is about 1.4 million. And the reason I, I bring this up is if you look at our bank account balance, uh, as of the end of October, we had like 14.8 million dollars sitting there. And I know we've said in the past, we like to keep a 90-day balance, uh, because if we don't keep that 90 days, the state wants to come in and keep an eye on us if we fall below that 90-day rainy day fund. So if you take the 1.439 that we're averaging, that basically says we need to keep about 4.3 million dollars for our rainy day fund. That's still leaving us carrying every month about $10 million sitting in that account. And I'm just wondering, you know, are, are we leaving too much in that account instead of using it for whatever we need to use? Are we over budgeting some of these lines that are in here and at the end of the year, there's still a pretty lion's share being left over to, you know, that then gets re-appropriated for the next year? So that's my concern is that, you know, we, we have the 90 days, but above and beyond that 90-day threshold, we've got about $10 million that we're carrying every month. And we have, you know, we have things that we would like to do and not like to do and we're, we're saying, hey, we need money, but one thing's not, one thing is not supporting the other, my opinion.
Okay, Rex?
Okay. The thing you got to look at is that $10 million excess that you're talking about is spread over numerous funds, which has legislation over top of it that dictates what those funds can and cannot be done with. A lot of those funds gets, money comes in from, from gas tax and property tax and numerous other things that doesn't come in our normal revenue stream that we have for say, general, per se. So general, we have more control over and if you look at general, you know, we've got, what we got in there, $2 to $3 million-ish?
We got like 3.3 last, the last time I saw.
So that's the one that we can control and we can regulate and so forth. We can't control fire, we can't control street funds, we can't control sanitation funds. There's several funds in there that has stagnant money that's been in there for several, several years that we can't touch because there's, there's definitions as to what that money can and can't be used for. Kenna has reached out to, uh, the state auditors and tried to find out, you know, how can we access and do something with those funds? I think one of them, she was able, they said you could do something with it and she was able to use it to pay for some fees. I don't remember exactly what it was for, but there's other funds that they're just, they're just in there that we can't, we can't touch. And I think if we, uh, push it a little too far, I mean, one thing that we're able to do with that is we're able to invest that money. Our, and we've, you've seen on our interest lines, it's, it's up. So we're getting interest on that money, so it is working for us in some way, shape or form. My fear is possibly if we press the state too much on, is, you know, it'll go into unclaims fund, fund and it'll come out of ours and it'll go into the state and then we won't have it anymore.
But if we can't use it?
You want to give it to the state?
If we can't use it and it's just sitting there.
Like I said, we're using it, we're getting investment money on it. So it's not like we're not getting anything out of it.
But doesn't that, just, just, but doesn't that seem?
Oh, trust me. I've researched it numerous years to try to figure out, you know, what we've used that money for, what can we use that money for? And it's some old, old funds that's paid off debt service and we've put too, you know, you have to be careful and Kenna is very careful about transferring funds in, from general into these dictated funds so that this kind of thing doesn't happen. But it, in years past, it was money that was put in to pay debt service and they put too much money in, into that fund. The debt service for that project was paid and now there's excess funds in there and we can't do anything with it. So, you know, it's not, it's not large, large amounts of money in those funds, but it's a few hundred thousand dollars in total, I'm just giving you an example. But the bulk of that $10 million is in designated funds that it's designated what you can use it for and we cannot bring it back and use it into general. We can't take it and, you know, we can't take it from one of those funds and put it into sanitation. There's rules and regulations on what the funds are set up for, the state requires us to do that and they regulate what you can use it for. So just.
So we should just be lucky we can get some interest off of it?
That's what I would say, you know? It, it is working for us, in, in other words.
All right, I'm glad you explained it and I appreciate it because it, it just seemed lopsided to me.
I sat in your, I sat in your shoes years ago and preached the same sermon, so I know what you're talking about, but I, I now know how it works and there's not much we can do about it.
Is there any way we can find out what it is there for?
You get a fund balance report and finance, yeah, we can.
And what we can use it for?
Or what it's for?
Yeah, because there's things we could, I mean, a fire station needs a new roof, we, we need a new trash truck now and not at the end of summer. You know, there's sidewalks all over town need repaired. Or if it's just sitting there and it was from over budgeting and we really didn't need it, why not give it back to the refunds to the taxpayers?
Trash is an enterprise fund. Trash is an enterprise fund.
Trash is an enterprise fund, so you can only use the money that comes in from trash fees for trash.
You, you mentioned some of it was for fire, you know?
Well, fire has their own budget, right? Because they're separate, right? Fire is separate, correct?
Yeah, I'm talking about the money that's in here from over budgeting over the years. I, I, we, we need to find out a way we can use it for something.
Brent, it's not for lack of trying that we haven't done that. Kenna has tried. And like I said, one of the funds, she was able to work it out to where we could use it for another, you know, another expense that was closely related to that, so.
I would suggest that anyone who, you know, has questions on this, maybe we're not explaining it right to you, go talk to Kenna and say, you know, what, what can we use this for? What can we use this line for? What can we use this for? Why has this been this amount for 10 years, why, or 20 years or whatever? And, and, and have her explain it to you. And, but I think the biggest thing is like we were talking about was the general fund. That's kind of the one that we look at and that's what, three, a little over 3 million or whatever, right?
So we're not quite at 90 days on that bunch yet.
Yeah, but it's the end of the year, so.
Seems, seems with all the interest that's growing anyway, we could at least, you know, rein still the half a percent income tax back to the folks who work out of town, you know?
I, I would suggest you just, just go talk to Kenna and set up a meeting with her and let her sit down and.
I don't think any government should be in the cash hoarding business, you know?
Okay, well, we're not hoarding cash, we just explained it for 10 minutes and so we're not hoarding cash, we just explained that, so, thank you.
Anything else? Or wishes?
I move that we adopt.
Who got there first?
Mr. Eads, I'll second it.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 198 dash 24 is passed, up for a second reading, ordinance 207 dash 24, can I get motion to read by title number?
So moved, second.
Ordinance 207 24, ordinance creating 19 incentive districts and declaring improvements to certain real property within the incentive districts to be of public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, identifying certain public infrastructure improvements that once made will benefit or serve the parcels in the incentive districts, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing an incentive district public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments, authorizing payments to the London City School District and tolls career and technical centers and approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a taxing increment, financing agreement with Tomcat LLC.
That's just the headline.
Who wants to?
Well, this is the residential development, TIF related to the residential development.
This one creates the 19 incentive districts. Public hearing on January 16th, I believe.
Yeah, so, um, I mean, I'm, I'm still working my way through all this stuff. Looks like we've got three ordinance back to back to back that are all lock stepping what needs to happen in order to allow for the development to take the formation that is desired, that being, uh, the taxing incremental financing as well as the new community authority. The declaration of the 19 incentive districts is, it, I would call it a preliminary declaration that needs to be made, that they need to be identified. Specifically, they also need to be declared as a public purpose in order to qualify for the special taxing, uh, incentives as well as, um, having a public improvement purpose allowing for the payment of the special service payments in lieu of taxes. So this ordinance, the following ordinance, which is respectfully, respectively, I'm sorry, regarding the, um, the TIF and then the one to follow, which would be the NCA, are, um, sorry, regarding the TIF and then the one to follow, which would be the NCA, are, they're complicated pieces of legislation. They are, if ultimately after the public hearing and after councils had opportunity to review, I think have the potential to be extremely beneficial for future development for especially residential housing in London to allow the developers to kind of share the load as it pertains to the creation of a lot of the infrastructure for these various neighborhoods as planned. But this is still very much in the, at least for this completion of it, and Mr. Gross and Mr. Smith are here representing the developers. And I know this has been something they've been working on for a very long time, so coming, this portion of it coming to council is their, their end game in the beginning of hours. So, that being stated, this one is coming on for a public hearing on January 16th. I know there's been lots of discussion about having council's ability to have independent attorneys review the legislation so that we're properly advised as to its legality, viability, if there are any pitfalls or things that we need to be looking for that we're just not attuned to. So I'm not sure what council's wishes are with regard to the timing of these various readings, if we should just go ahead and leave them on, and then, as hopefully we can, have our answers by the time it comes up for a public hearing. That would be our goal, I think, ultimately.
Sounds good to me.
Who would be reaching out to, to get...
Probably me.
Sure. Do you feel that? Can we get somebody to look at?
Uh, I mean, that's gonna be, over the holidays is always a tricky time for anybody, but hopefully if we can come up with some very smart questions, then we can hopefully truncate how long of a process that would be, and I have every intention of doing that. So, my suggestion is we leave this and the following two ordinances, we'll keep them on for third reading and march forward.
Do you guys know what law firm you're using, or is that what the process you're talking about, Mrs. Traynor? Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else on this one? Okay, on to ordinance 208-24, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 208-24, authorizing the City of London, Ohio to accept title in certain real property located within the city and immediately transfer title back to the current owner for the purpose of implementing tax increment financing pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Sections 5709.41 and dispensing with requirement that the resolution must be read on three different days pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 731.17A.
So, again, this is preliminary determinations that need to be made in order for these proposed developments to qualify for their sought-after goal, that being a TIF and an NCA. The first ordinance, again, was to identify the 19 various incentive districts. This ordinance, as part of the Ohio Revised Code, in order to qualify for tax incremental financing, that property has to have been owned by the city. So this process would accomplish that requirement by a transfer of those properties to the city for immediate retransfer back to the developers in order to satisfy that statutory Given that this is in lockstep with the other two ordinances, I'm suggesting that it stay on, unless there was some reason that it needed to have a dispensment of the three different reading days. That sounds like an emergency.
All right. On to ordinance 209-24, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 209-24, declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the City of London, Mass County, Ohio to be of public purpose pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5709.41, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designated improvements that once made will directly benefit the parcels for which improvements is declared to be of public purpose, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing an urban redevelopment tax increment equivalent fund, authorizing the execution of a tax increment financing TIF agreement, and providing related authorizations pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Sections 5709.41, 0.42, 0.43, 0.83, 2, and 85.
And this one is the, the heart of the matter with regard to the actual creation of the service payments that are the bread and butter of the TIF. The TIF would require those service payments in lieu of real property taxes. However, I believe this particular TIF as proposed would have no detrimental impact to the school district in which the TIF properties would. Propose leave it on for next reading.
Okay. On to Resolution 210-24, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 210-24, a resolution determining that a petition to establish the London Gateway New Community Authority is sufficient and complies with the requirements of Section 349.03 of the Ohio Revised Code in form and substance, setting the time and place for a hearing on petition and authorizing the notice of publication of such hearing.
And this is the final piece to the puzzle. This would be the creation of the New Community Authority, identified as the London Gateway New Community Authority. This resolution does come on for a public hearing on January 16th and is, again, to be read part and parcel with the other three ordinances.
And this one has a public hearing scheduled for January 16th as well?
So we'll stay on. Fortunately.
Okay, on to new business, Resolution 211-24, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 211-24, a resolution increasing appropriations. The police department would like to purchase a new cruiser.
So this is 72,000, to be appropriated for the purchase of a new cruiser. I believe this has emergency clause, and I believe the chief has a vehicle chosen already? So that's why we wanted to bring it through tonight.
I had, I saw that they wanted a new cruiser, and how's that become a $70,000 SUV? I said, how does a new cruiser become a $70,000 SUV?
Well, I think that includes upfitting and various things for the cruiser as well, is that right?
Yeah, the increase of 2024 capital appropriations by $70,000 included a new LPD vehicle, including the upfitting. I think, Rex, help me out, was it about 20,000 in upfitting on that vehicle? Vehicle itself was, if I understood, a pretty, pretty good deal.
It's between 17 and 20,000 for the upfitting. Glenn initially brought it to the committee wanting it to be put into capital for next year. He happened to come across one that was in stock. It will be cheaper than, it's a 2024, it will be cheaper than if he puts an order in for 2025. He said probably about $3,000, $4,000 cheaper. So he thought it'd be advantageous for us to go ahead and get it and save a little bit of money.
So it'll be cheaper and we'll take possession as soon as we pay for it.
Right, they don't have to wait for it to be built.
Because I read an article the other day that some of these vehicles, emergency vehicles, are like six months to a year behind.
Yeah.
So that, that was another plus that we found.
So by, by doing this now, obviously we don't have to wait. What we're doing is we're just moving up the timeline for what we would have done in '25. So we're just doing that now here at the end of '24, instead of doing the same thing in '25. This is a normal rotation for him to replace cruisers. So this is...
That's where I'm stuck, between a cruiser and an SUV.
Between a cruiser and SUV. Well, you know, if it has lights and sirens, it's a cruiser. It's a police vehicle.
Cruiser's code word for a $70,000 SUV.
Well...
You learn a lot here, don't you?
You do, you do.
I make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
I'll second.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
No.
Mr. Norman?
Yes. Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
No, again.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 211-24 is passed. On to ordinance 212-24, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 212-24, an ordinance amending Section 660 of the coified ordinances.
All right, so this is what I hope becomes the pathway to better sidewalks here in London. Talked to our safety service director, and I said, hey, is there anything on the books that tells our zoning guy when he goes out specifically, you know, what a bad sidewalk looks like? And he said, no. And I thought, well, that's pretty hard for that guy to enforce then if he's got nothing to go by. So I did a little research across several different other communities. I took all the similar things that they all agreed were unacceptable for a sidewalk and combined them to go into our Section 660.05. That basically tells the homeowner, you're responsible for keeping your sidewalks safe, and now we've given them the definition of what is a safe sidewalk here in London. And I, like I said, I hope this is the beginning of the pathway of us getting our sidewalks fixed. But, you know, if we don't give our zoning people the tools and our administration the tools to enforce and the guidelines to enforce, we're gonna stay in that gray area of, you know, we don't, we don't know, is that sidewalk safe? Some of them obviously are self-explanatory, but there are those that aren't. So, so that's what this will do. It'll give our zoning, our zoning people the information they need to go out and enforce if we choose to do so. That's all we got.
So, Mr. Gross, I don't believe you addressed this part, and you, and you left the other night, but when Polty was here, they talked about walkability being a big thing for developers. So I would think as a developer, you would agree that walkability needs to be throughout the city and not just in the area that you're developing. Hopefully this goes towards that. That's what I'm trying to tell council, that hopefully that creates better walkability throughout the City of London down the road if we've changed this. Would you agree? No? Thank you.
I just want walkability in my neighborhood.
So there's no hurry, we have time, so that is what it is.
Look it over. Okay, on to ordinance 213-24, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 213-24, an ordinance naming Jenkinson Avenue.
So this is related to Jenkinson Avenue. It's past legislation that named it Jenkinson Drive, but with the 911 system and the utilities, it's still listed as Jenkinson Drive. So for consistency, we want to get legislation to name it Jenkinson Avenue officially. So that's what this is about.
Is there a problem if somebody calls on London locating that road to the subway?
Could be. I don't know if billing, utilities billing is a problem getting to where it needs to go or not, but...
It was just brought to our attention by 911. They were going through updating their, their database, and they come across as Jenkinson Drive, and they're like, where's Jenkinson Drive? And they go, well, that's Jenkinson Avenue. And they're like, well, we want it to be one consistent name. Council, back in 1968, I believe it was, changed that to Jenkinson Drive, and evidently the residents didn't like Jenkinson Drive, so they named it Jenkinson Avenue because that's what the street sign says, that's what everybody that lives there calls it, that's what the postal service calls it, but the utility companies went by legislation and so does 911. So they'd like to get it changed so it's consistent with everybody. Well, maybe our developer out here wants to honor a former mayor and use the other part, Jenkinson Drive or Jenkinson Avenue. Brian Jenkinson was his name.
Please don't do that, because we have a Miller shooting that's in our avenue. And they don't let you do that. We had a, we had a name like Matt, the man, but very predictable about these things. That was the best one, because if I know that from, but we're trying to name things, and we had something that was just, just close, and he's like, you can't use it. I tried four different ways, and they called me, and no, it's, it's, I didn't really care, but they, they know it is important for them for whatever reason.
I can say from door dashing that it is a problem, because several times I get one for Jenkins Drive, and you put in Jenkins Drive, and it takes you nowhere. It's like there is no, and then I figured out after a couple minutes that it was. But yeah, it is, it's even, even, I don't know what her name is.
Problem for door dashing.
It is a problem for door dash, trying to make that money.
Do we need to, should we pass this since 911's concerned with it?
Be considered an emergency, yes.
I'm making a move... Doesn't have to be an emergency, but if you suspend it, it'll go into effect in 30 days instead of two more readings. Yeah, that's true. Okay. But you can still suspend, or if you want to add the emergency, I'm just saying, either way, what do you want to do, Rich?
Just go ahead and suspend it.
I'll second.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
For the mailman, yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes, sir.
Hey, ordinance 213-24 is passed. Now on to round...
We want to go back to the 660.
That's our last one.
We want to go back to 660. We want to go back to this.
Start round table. Start us out with round table. Well, we made it through a year, and everybody's still here, we all are still talking to each other, and I think that says a lot. We've done a lot this year, I think, to move the city forward. We're working on a new police station, we've got developments coming in, we're trying new things like TIFs, NCA's, learning, a lot. And, you know, it's, I think we got a great set of people that want the same thing to happen. We don't always agree how we get there, but I think we all want what's best for the city and for the citizens of the city. And it's, it's been great working with everyone up here and the administration. They've been very helpful throughout the year, and I want to give them kudos for that because I've never always been their biggest fan. Elections are coming up next year, so once again, everybody will have a chance to pick who they want to make decisions for them. I know I'm being long. I just, I appreciate all the support from the people out in the community when I'm talking to them, and I get to hear one-on-one. Little things that we've done that have made a big difference in that individual's life is, it's amazing to stand there and be able to feel, hey, I'm a part of that, I actually was a part of that. We have work to do, we're gonna do it, I think. I want to wish everybody a happy holiday. Be safe, take care of your family, give everybody... Elections are coming up next year, so once again, everybody will have a chance to pick who they want to make decisions for them. I know I'm being long. I just, I appreciate all the support from the people out in the community when I'm talking to them and I get to hear one-on-one. Little things that we've done that have made a big difference in that individual's life is, it's amazing to stand there and be able to feel, hey, I'm a part of that. I actually was a part of that. We have work to do. We're gonna do it, I think. I want to wish everybody a happy holiday. Be safe. Take care of your family. Give everybody a hug. Be careful out there on the roads. And I want to make sure I see everybody back here on January 2nd for our meeting. That's it.
Thank you. John?
I agree with a lot Mr. Norman said. Best part of it is we're not stagnating. We're growing, actually doing good things. Some of it's new to us. We'll just have to look into it a little more. But it's all great things. We've had a lot. I'm sure next year's gonna even be better. I'm always glad to see something happening after we pass it. I know out by Aldi today, they started out that way a little bit, marking off and stuff. So, that'll be reality in another year. And glad to work with everybody here this year. And the end of the year, it's just, next year goes as fast. It's scary. And just wish, wish everybody, their families, very Merry Christmas and a prosperous and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Shannon?
As a new councilperson this year, I can't tell you, it's been quite a ride. But on the other hand, it's really exciting with looking at what's going on with downtown and the Westwood Collective and what's looking with Mr. Gross and friends, getting us new residential developments in order to support the businesses, not only downtown, but everywhere. And I'm just really thankful to be a part of it and hopefully helping move things forward for next year, next generation, things to come. So, thanks for a good year. Happy holidays and we'll see you in 2025.
Thank you. Andy?
I'd like to thank everyone who's listening and showing an interest in what's going on with the city. I'd like to thank Mr. Gross and his associates that have provided a lot of education for the TIF and NCA. I've enjoyed working with everyone and being a part of what's going on with the City of London. The service meeting, the next one, is January 14th at 5:00 in the meeting room next door. And finance meeting is the 21st at 5:30 in the meeting room next door. That's it.
Thank you. Rich?
About to say in a short time to say it. First of all, thank all city employees for doing your jobs this past year, doing them well. And to our safety service, police officers, EMS, firemen, they're gonna have to work this weekend or over Christmas. Kudos to you. I know I did that. And I used to volunteer. I was single. I would volunteer and take somebody's shift that had a family and kids so they could be home at Christmas. I know what that means. So, I want to thank all my fellow council members up here. It's been a good year. We got a lot done and we're rolling. I think next year's gonna be great. I want to thank Mr. Gross for all of his input. He's put so much, we've done so much with him. It's really exciting for what's coming. Our population is just gonna grow and grow. We're getting some nice homes in the city. And things are just moving in a very positive direction. And we need to keep that momentum up. So, thank you all council members. I appreciate y'all. I love y'all. Merry Christmas to each and every person up here, each and every person that's listening to us tonight. God bless you. I hope you have a prosperous and Happy New Year. Safety meeting will be January 14th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Could I say something real fast? I'd like to wish Councilman Hayes a happy, happy birthday tomorrow, I believe. Right? Tomorrow? So, happy birthday to you, Councilman Hayes.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
You only turn 21 once, so...
Brent?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and listening. And yeah, it's been a really interesting and learning year. And it's been good to work with everybody up here and even you guys sometimes. But that's about all I got. You guys have a good holiday.
Greg?
Hey, I, I also want to thank the city employees. I don't think we say it enough. And it's not just the police and fire. It's the people that work rec. It's the people that work in the offices here. It's people who make things easier for everyone else. And, and I don't think we recognize them enough, so I do want to thank them. I want to thank the council members here. It's been a lot of fun this year. And I appreciate all of the input that we have and the discussions that we have. A special thank you goes out to Councilman McDaniel's and probably his wife for our, our thoughtful Christmas gift.
I taste tested everything.
I appreciate that. Pardon me?
I taste tested everything.
You taste tested everything. Well, I want to thank you and your wife for that.
Amen.
Merry Christmas to everyone. Please be safe on New Year's Eve. We haven't really said that, but, you know, let's make sure not just everybody here, but everybody gets home safely that night. And that's it. And you know why?
That took my thunder.
I stole your thunder? Well, I got one you should add.
What's that?
Because I forgot to add that.
Since Greg forgot, yeah. Matthew, thanks for taking on this endeavor. Appreciate everything you do for the council. Thanks, Paul and Wes, for coming out tonight. Again, Rich, happy birthday tomorrow. It's a big one, I think. Other than that, everybody have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We'll see you next year. Motion adjourned?
Motion to adjourn. That's a nice pen.
I won't steal your thunder.
You know why I held this? You know where it was?
That's your prerogative, you know.
Right there.
I know. Some days I do.
You've got the only white ribbon.